Hundred hours for the material. And that's, that's for a whole week. We'll use it for a whole week like we did before. I'd like to use it pretty much over in, off of West Chester Road that developed, development over there, Providence Station. But the only problem is, is this, even now, what we did in Providence Hill, I get a lot of feedback from those people over there because they don't like the way it looks. But, you know, the road itself is in good shape over there. You know, that's-
Yeah, it's just cracked up, so, yeah, gone through the different developments.
Yeah, so, but the road is in pretty good shape.
There is a surly that you can lay across the whole road. All right? This seals the whole road. There's an outfit from Lancaster that does that.
Yes, Morton Payden.
Huh?
Morton Payden.
Yeah, they do the whole road and it doesn't look like a zigzag with its, you know, wherever the crack-
It's about fifteen thousand a mile.
Yeah. Well, that's where I would cut back on Fairview Road and start doing some roads like that. But in reference to, for the slipstream, and if you want me to use my, that manhole down Goose Town Road that we were talking about, that was a sewer out put, put in there. There has to be, it's been talked about a couple of times. School bus drivers complaining about everybody that drives Goose Town Road to go up the coast of back, like Seventeenth Avenue or South Town Road. That there, it has to be a warranty in reference to that sewer contractor to put that in. You know, to ran the sewer into the old Wilson property. All right? A lot of that went in there. There's a pumping station right next there where they come in there and mill and do some tree work. But there, that's their liability. It's not for the township to go around and fix it up there. But that's a, you're talking about safety and welfare of the residents? People have bought them out with small cars, all right? And that's a safety factor along with the road going down South Bailey Road. When he's gonna mill that road up there where the bell telephone never came back and put the wires up and that tree's been hanging there and took out the guardrail. But if they're gonna mill that, it don't take that long. Take the mill machine down there and mill that out. If you don't, we have rollers here, you got a backhoe, you can get a jackhammer, do a square area and dig it out and put a binder in there. Yeah, but it's easier to the mill machine.
Pennsylvania American?
Yeah.
That's always what contract states or what we can get from them. If it's got an issue-
That is an issue for the last five years. It's like talking, bringing it up every year.
Well, I'll look into it with Pennsylvania American and see why they're not living up on their end if that's the, if that's the case. Did you have comments or you had your hand up earlier?
Tom Nash, I'm from Lyons Lane. A lot of this stuff with the roads, just like Strasburg Road, they paved that just, what, two, two years ago when we had the bid? But, and I know that from working with the state, they used to ditch the side of the road so water would run away and not lay at the side of the road. And I think that has a lot to do with why the roads deteriorate in the first place. It's because the landscape on one side of the road or the other is not addressed. So, you know, you have, you have water that lays in a certain spot. Eventually, it gets under the road and in the winter freezes thaw and then you have problems. And I think that's, you know, they don't address the act. They just keep putting patch on the road without addressing the actual water runoff and whatever.
Has, has this been, I don't think this-
I don't know if it's working either.
Well, number one, I would like to have the motion be more identifying what you're doing. All it says is roads. So therefore, when somebody looks at the minutes, they know what you're doing. I wouldn't reference the letter, date of July twenty-sixth. Could you tell me specifically and put it in your motion, the road? I've heard discussion that Goose Town and Fairview. Could you please put that in the motion? Goose Town and Fairview. And if there's only one side of it or half of it, put that in the motion so that people know what you're doing. Secondly, much of this, I feel, should have been discussed at a work session. Maybe it was. And I feel TAG should have a table as well as the police, if he has to work with the papers. I've seen other township meetings, the officials have the table themselves. So I would appreciate the motion identifying what roads you're working on. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just modify it?
Modify the motion to specify the, the roads that are identified by and recommended by the township engineer and the work that's being done. It's gonna be Fairview Road milling to an inch and a half depth for a quantity of eleven thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine.
Doesn't need to be any of that specific?
Well, that, that's why you would reference the engineer's letter, because that spells it all out.
Well, yeah, but I mean, at least saying the, maybe just say the roads. The roads, that way we know what roads are being worked on. It's about suggestion as more as to improve visibility of it.
Sure, it's the, the Fairview Road work and Goose Town Road work.
Okay. So do I need to strike my current motion?
Well, I do, oh, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I do have a paper here stating a, a copy of what roads, part of the roads wanted to be done.
And the cost?
Yeah, that, that's what identifies-
The cost for each road.
Identify the water. The roads at the-
That's why you would identify the letter in the motion as opposed to-
Like Fairview, X amount of dollars, the whole thing's a hundred and fifty-eight, I guess. But how much is it for Fairview Road versus Goose Town Road?
We don't have those told us right there, but that's-
It's approximately eleven thousand for Goose Town Road and the balance for Fairview Road.
So roughly a hundred and forty thousand or a hundred and forty, but somewhere, a hundred and forty-some thousand for Fairview Road. So, that's nice to divide people, that's like doing the-
Strike my current motion and make them work.
Wait, I'd keep your current motion, but appending a reference to the work to be done for Fairview Road and Goose Town Road.
I'll append my motion to indicate the road, the work to be done for Fairview Road and Goose Town Road. Doesn't need to be decided at that point?
Yeah.
Before you make the motion, I just have one more comment, a bit short and sweet. All right? Would you call it Cover Bridge Road, Fraw Hollow Road, or wherever you wanna call it? The TAG, they can quote beyond the price, cut up, went anywhere from, I think somewhere around nine hundred thousand, several hundred thousand dollars to do that road from Fraw Hollow.
Fraw Hollow all the way up, when, when the first time we built it was almost, I think right around seventy thousand dollars.
You had to build, and the state almost didn't approve because we put too much black out there.
Because we had, we had to take a base out and then make it six inches instead of one.
So I'm just saying, there's four houses there. I'm talking about places where we have a lot of traffic. You have four or five houses going down, and that road's been closed. They love it because they've been closed for over thirty years, so they have a private road. The one on Fairview Road is an old private road, all right? Basically almost private, Doc Roberts, and I can mention all the other people that there, maybe four or five on down through there. I'm talking about roads that we travel every day, and we did talk about the drainage and the problem. We're spending seventy-some thousand, a hundred and forty thousand on roads that are basically private roads almost. Hardly nobody drives out there. We even put twenty-five mile an hour speed zone out there, so. And we put speed bumps on them. Speed bumps, and people ask for speed bumps in their development, and we put them on private roads just about. Thank you.
I mean, there's no doubt that there's only certain residents out there, but, I mean, you know, we're being told by the, the engineer and then by, by the department heads that this is the major project to be done. We're also looking at the other work to be done, and I, I don't, I've tried to come up some other solutions to handle that road. I mean, there needs to be able to respond, and our plows are only gonna break it up even worse in the wintertime if we don't do something. It's gonna be even more expensive.
We use the crap dirt brakes with plows.
You were, you were talking a few minutes ago about stoning it. Liquid fuels will not pay, it won't pay for stone, stone road.
But when you say that, I mean, it would no longer be covered for mileage in our liquid fuel amount, or they just won't pay for us to clean?
Not first name, stone road. It has to be blacktopped and it has to, it has to be at least sixteen, sixteen, I think it has to be sixteen feet wide for, just same way at Lyons Lane, when we did Lyons Lane a couple of years ago. We had to, we had to widen it a little bit and go all the way back so we get liquid fuels money for it. Because liquid fuels will not pay for it.
Because we got liquid fuel money a couple of years ago?
What's, what program's that?
So if we put two, two A modified- So if we put two A modified down on the patches sections right there, that will be minus from our total-
That would have to come out of our general fund.
Right, that, but two A modified, it's not a lot, we both know, it's not a lot of money. The, the thing is, is, it, but, well, the worst part about that is that now that will no longer be considered in our total mileage for liquid fuels. Is that correct? Okay, so, yeah, the two A modified obviously is not much more. Okay. Let's quickly, Mrs. Scott, then we're gonna move to votes.
Yeah, well, now that you've identified the road, I want a comment put in the minutes. Definitely, Fairview Road is where concentrated wealth is, and I feel that you are using the public funds to accommodate concentrated wealth.
Those in favor? Aye. Tag, can I ask you one more question before we move on? Is there any others? I mean, we're hearing about these little bits and pieces of township roads that need to be repaired. Obviously, Fairview's in a certain situation. Do you think you have enough funds within our liquid fuel to address, like, possibly the patch job in West Chester or some of these other areas with the seventy or eighty thousand dollars? And you're saying you'll address seal cracking? So we're not just specifically taking care of one road, your master plan is to take care of some of these other roads, correct?
Well, that's correct. You, you know, but the trouble is, you have to take care of your one, you know, your worst road in the town. But, you know, I don't care who lives on the road, but it has to be taken care of.
Right, I understand. It's not a private road, it's a public road that anyone can travel on.
It's got some, it has some big holes in there.
Yeah, look at the road you did, that's a-
But TAG, you, you're saying to me though, in my vote pick, you will consider some of that other money to address some of these other little small parts that we're having problems with, right? Residents travel more.
That's why, you know, I'll bring it back to the board and we'll try to get some of that spots done, you know.
Okay. All right. Al?
We have to pay Chris Delk on how would the board like to address that?
No, we need, no, it is, we still need three votes. It always has to be a minimum of three votes.
So motion first. Was this, I, I mean, if we were to bring it up again when Wilson's back, is there, you know, too late at this point?
Yeah, because, yeah, he, he, right now, he, he, he's gonna try to schedule us in, in late August. Probably, you know, like, late, late August. You know, that's nice. Getting a lot of the outfits out there.
Okay. Hey Mike, I like the plan that you proposed to get the bits out sooner, so it's more competitive.
Next year.
For next year to be more, you know-
Next year would start like in February, if that's okay. I mean, at this point though, so, even if we were to bring this up at the, if we were to make the next workshop session, special meeting, that would be too late probably to continue on with this. Just trying to get a few, because, you know, we do have one, one number up here.
So, we only have two votes right now?
Correct.
I'm just trying to see if it's too late at this point.
I don't think it'd be too late, and then, you know, we'll probably be pushing it close to October.
There's a lot of other outfits.
Well, there are, buddy, but none of them were bid on, is the problem, so, I bet.
I had a question before him.
There is a lot of outfits. I just had a job done down at BFW, and I give you four copies of the black copy.
I'm just saying, I'm just stating that we put this out to bid, and Long's is the only one who would bid on it. So.
I wanna know the legal ramifications. If that road is not done and somebody goes off of the road and we're killed because we didn't repair the road, are we responsible for litigation for not maintaining our roads?
Well, there's certainly always the potential someone, there's always certainly the potential someone could press a lawsuit, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we're liable. There are exceptions to the tort, tort laws that could be brought against the township. I won't comment on, give my public opinion on those. It's something-
But we're open, subject to litigation if something happens on that road. Somebody could start a lawsuit against us.
People sue based on condition of runs, yeah?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Moving on. What am I supposed to do with Chris Delk on invoicing? I can't pay it out of liquid fuels if we don't do this project, and he's owed close to three or four thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, well, I think we're gonna have to put it, make the workshop a special meeting. As well as when we're back, you know, I'm gonna go with the vote. At that point, we'll have essentially a full board vote.
And TAG, you, I mean-
It doesn't carry at that point, though, it doesn't carry.
Even though we're, we're in that zone, I mean, that other seventy thousand, if you can look at some of these spots, like I said before, given it's summer, and see if we can get some of these other spots fixed, that residents are happy with, or they're everybody's getting patched too, that'd be great, you know, so, I appreciate it.
Facility, I'm working on it. Okay, moving on.
Next thing on my report, the Bowa Fellowship, the, I was contacted by their attorney recently, indicated they're gonna be submitting in the very near future, the request to reopen their, their conditional use application, which is still pending before the board, which has been in suspense for a number of years. There is a May two thousand twelve settlement agreement that relates to it, which requires them to come in for conditional use approval for the project. Once they, once we receive it, that'll, of course, be forwarded to the planning commission and engineer and something else, or any comment they have. And I would expect at this point that any hearing would be scheduled at some point in September, mid to late September region. The preemptive question I wanted to get out there for you guys to start thinking about would be whether you'd wanna have that hearing on the same night as your regular board meeting or the night of your workshop session or some other night.
Budget meetings are at five thirty before the workshops.
Yeah, so, can't be before the workshop.
I know, it's gonna be, it'd be tough, yep.
I think it may have to be another night, given the age of it.
Public comment be there?
No.
At that meeting, yes.
At the work section, if you're saying work section.
Well, this would be-
This would be a separate meeting.
This would be a separate condition of use hearing. And yeah, yeah, anyone could just support the Holland.
Does the residents in that area get notified?
Yes, residents within five hundred feet of property, it's also advertised in the paper. We typically put it on the township website as well. So yes, advertised in the-
Lisa, do you have a copy of their conditional use application?
It hasn't been submitted yet.
Or just your hearing through the very cloud?
Nothing great from, from them.
Okay.
Mortonville Road, after the discussion from the last meeting, or the workshop session and tail end of the other, your June meeting, I looked into the kind of history of Mortonville Road and, and what's needed there. From a legal perspective, there's nothing we need to officially do to open the road because there was no ordinance passed to close it in any way. That being said, what we do have are a number of geotech and traffic engineering studies that were done about two years ago to assess the condition of the road and improvements that are needed at a minimum. Since it's been more than two years for those, my suggestion would be that we have our current traffic engineer, TPD, look at those and come up with a recommendation as to whether they believe we can open it in any sort of limited capacity. In doing that, what's, what's it gonna take to make sure that it's, you know, a safe level? And to the extent that we need to put restrictions on the types of trucks and other vehicles that go down it, what's needed to, to put those restrictions in place? So if the boards agree, well, I can have TPD start to look into that.
What's the, would you have a ballpark figure of turnaround time or, and cost to TPD?
Cost for TP, I'm not, I'm not sure. You know, he's gonna have to look at, there were like four or five different types of studies that were done two years ago. And I'm not sure about his turnaround time either. For the, to jump ahead really quick, for the stop sign intersection, South Bailey and West Chester Roads, I'm waiting on a quote from him as to the, how much it would cost him to do the traffic studies with those stop signs up. I did get him to confirm that the road is, the intersection is partially split by the township boundary, so we will need something to interact, you know, interface with the other township, but, so waiting.
We need to close first.
Yeah, the update on, from him, on that one, we still need to-
Could we get a quote for the analysis of Mortonville Road? I mean, I know it's kind of a bigger project, but-
That, that's what I want from him.
Just trying to get a quote for the-
Not to start running off and have him do the work, but-
Correct. To get a quote, yeah. Okay. I'm fine, we're just getting a quote.
And then that gives us an idea of, I mean, it's another study, but it has been several years now. And if we are serious about trying to open it up, then we'll make sure it's safe.
Yeah. Is there a way to use it for just emergency situations, for like, emergency?
So what, when we, when we go through the process, in the end, we're gonna have to do something. Either we're gonna, you know, so far, I don't think it's been officially closed by an ordinance which we need to do under the South Bay Township. And depending on the outcome of his study, we're either, you know, we're gonna need to address that by, by ordinance to make sure that it's appropriately limited. As well as to, you know, we, we want him to have an assessment to make sure that the emergency units are able to handle that.
Yeah, and West Bradford, their township, I spoke with their township manager, and they're in favor of the four-way stop sign.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're willing, I mean, it was verbal, but I mean, they said they were willing to split that study with us if we could do it.
Okay, great.
Okay. Pension plan?
So the pension plan, Act forty-four two thousand nine was a provision that was put in place to try to rein in statewide some of the pension plan costs and the issues from a state perspective in terms of how pensions are run and operated. There is an audit done occasionally. The, as I understand from Pani, the audit, the auditors have recommended that we put a, it's a mouthful, professional, I'm sorry, pension plan professional services, procedures, resolution or procedures in place. Essentially, in layman's terms, it is a process that we would approve by which we would note that any pension plan professional consultants who have managed the plan are to be selected through a request proposal process. If that makes sense to everyone, I hope it does. A lot of peas in there. We had done it, we've done it just two months ago with another township we represent, and so I was able to, to use that model form of resolution, which tracks the statewide model form of resolution. We'd consider doing that. So that's what's put before you in your packet for consideration is the, the resolution itself. And the, the reason why you do it as a resolution is to kind of, to try to get rid of the issue which we have now, is there is a potential that back in two thousand nine, they did approve the procedures, but the auditor couldn't find them, and I don't think office staff could find them. By doing it in a resolution, it's something that's gonna be in the resolution book and someone's gonna be able to track down.
Right, okay. I move that the township adopt resolution number two thousand sixteen dash zero nine, setting forth the written procedures under Act forty-four of two thousand nine by which the township shall choose professional services for its pension plates. Second, questions or comments?
I just have a question, but these are Pennsylvania laws, right? In other words, these resolutions and, and the acts and so forth are related to, in a Pennsylvania law that refers to townships.
It is, that's correct.
Second place.
Mrs. Scott?
So what have we been doing wrong before?
So the law requires that we have the procedures in place for selecting a professional consultant.
Couldn't we do that without a resolution?
The, the problem is, and, and there, there could have potentially been procedures put in place or approved back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, but there's no record of it that the township could locate. By doing it by resolution, it's in our resolution book and it's something that anyone can easily find and locate. We're required to do it under the act, and this is something that makes it more clear that we've done it.
Well, that act was in two thousand nine.
That's correct.
This is two thousand sixteen, and has there been any hardship or any problem?
Well, the main thing is-
From the pension audit, it was a finding, a verbal finding in the last audit, and now it's another verbal finding in this audit.
A pension audit conducted by whom?
By the state.
The state.
Oh, the state conducts your pension.
Mm-hmm. Sorry, I couldn't-
I, I would, I just find it a problem based upon what I've read regarding concentrated wealth taking over the state system, which is Peacers, something to do with that. And it's been corrupted.
This isn't Peacers, though.
I understand that, but it's in the same category. This is public funds, this is a public pension, and then here we go. I think select people will be submit proposal. So I would only say, and I also wanna comment, because as I observe, I feel the solicitor is actually the township manager. And I feel our situations here are rigged and railroaded. And I do want that in the minutes. You can listen to it on video if you just use the link.
Speak out, I'm asking others not to-
I'll go out.
But so the benefit of, of these types of procedures is it allows for more of a competitive selection process when you consider when you're selecting your pension plan professional?
And like, within this, I mean, just for the public to know, there is, there is areas and sections here, like one section, conflict of interest. There's an area of conflict that's-
It's just a straight, they patched, as a fact.
We care. I mean, there's an area of conflict of interest, there is disqualifications from anyone participating in this process, which is quite my thing. So there is protections here in place, huh? Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries three zero. Talk about the stop sign, the floodplain, ordinance amendments?
So there's nothing concrete to present before you, other than to note that the county is going through the process of preparing the, kind of, the state above revised floodplain maps. Currently, they expect, I think it's a six to seven month rollout of their model ordinance for us to consider with mid-two thousand seventeen, when they would require all the different townships to approve the amended floodplanes with new floodplain maps. I, I can't speak to what the floodplain, the new floodplain maps are gonna show, but those will come out later this year, if not earlier next year. Just wanna give an update to the board, that that process is out there.
Pervert McCombi's office also said we need a budget for passing this ordinance.
Right.
I think it's something likely.
I mean, you do get a model ordinance from the county and trickle from the state.
Right.
But you do wanna look through that, just like we did with our, wanna do with our stormwater management ordinance, is to make sure that overly onerous provisions are carved out to the maximum as possible, of properly balancing private property rights with the requirements under law.
Planning Commission report, Mr. Trump?
Question on the solicitor's report.
You can-
Well, you have a solicitor, and the public should have to write the question to solicitor in the report.
Okay, go ahead, buddy.
Thank you. No sense in using this. But in reference to solicitor making a report on Kirk Road, they're talking about that. There have, if you go down there, I mean, TAG was down there yesterday, moved it, it has a six ton backhoe that went up and down there a couple of times. So you're talking weight wise, core don't weigh that. Core might weigh two thousand pounds, some are more or less. So the traffic be going up and down there with trucks, township truck, and also a large three-quarter ton trucks, I'll say, five-fifties. But you're gonna have a bike thing there. There's cores already there. I don't see why we keep on spending money for more engineers, all right? There's cones over the core thing. We already know that the base was never put in there. There's six inches of ID top, liners and ID top. I, I took a roll down there.
There's six inches of ID top, biners and ID top. I took a roll down there. There's over six inches. You can see where the big crack is because it shifted a little bit. And that's the reason why Tag poured concrete into one area, alright? You're gonna have bicycles going up and down there. You have equipment going up there now. Now, you wanna hire more people to come out there and tell you what the problem is?
Buddy, can I stop? Can I stop you right there so you maybe can understand? We have a report saying that the road is unsafe. So, what I was gonna say is like.
Then if it's unsafe, why do we have backhoe and bicycle going up and down there?